That seven lives were lost. And this matter was raised on the floor of Parliament by a leader from the Morroby Province. And it is a concern to the Parliament and the leaders of Morroby Province and to the families of those lives lost. So there's a lot of matters to be looked at within the Health Department. But my committee this afternoon and tomorrow will concentrate on the scope of what actually happened. We are not here to nail somebody. We are not policemen here. We are just trying to get answers and report back to Parliament of what happened so we can establish the facts and we can try and avoid the sort of issues in the future. We are all aware that Morroby Provincial Health Authority is one of the best performing provincial health authorities, including a few other provinces. And that's a good record for the PHA, for the chairman and the CEO. And everyone's quite impressed with all the work that has been going on at Angar Hospital. But just because of this incident that happened, we would like to know what actually happened. So we're going to zoom down on that matter only. So this is the reason why my committee has decided to attend to this matter and report back to Parliament as a matter of urgency. So thank you, the chairman and the CEO and the provincial administrator for being with us this afternoon. For record purposes, I would like to start by asking the chairman and the four of you to introduce yourselves and tell us your name, what you do, and when you took up your position, where you are at the moment. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the committee. My name is David Wissing. I'm the chairman of the Morroby Provincial Health Authority. I've been involved with Angar initially and then the PHA now for the last 11 years.
My name is Dr. Stephen James. I am currently the director of Curative Well Services under the PHA. I came into this office since 2022.
Good afternoon, Chairman. Thank you. My name is Dr. Kim Pasbenga. I'm currently occupying the office of the CEO. I've been given the privilege to occupy the office since June of 2020. That was when we also became a PHA about a year before that, from Angar to PHA. So thank you. That's my portion.
Chairman and the team, my name is Max Bruton. I am the Morroby Provincial Administrator. I've been appointed on this chair about three years ago, and it is my final turn.
Now, we'll just go straight into our matters of interest. We all know that the Angar Hospital, is it Memorial Hospital or Hospital?
Angar Memorial.
Angar Memorial Provincial Hospital has just undergone some major refurbishment by our friends from Australia. Chairman, I would like to ask you this question to just inform the committee and the Parliament if the refurbishments went according to plan. Is everything that the hospital needed, are there, what are some more work that needs to be done on the hospital if there's any, what's lacking? Yeah, so just give us a brief history of what happened.
All right. Well, the hospital redevelopment program that you mentioned, Chairman, that was kicked off as part of a joint understanding between the governments of Australia and PNG in 2013. From that time, there was a lot of planning that went into putting a new hospital in place and construction, I think, began in 2018 on the new facilities. So in all, there was about $250 million Australian dollars, I can't find the exact number, but about $250 million Australian dollars worth of new facilities built, okay? New building, new acute wards, a lot of new facilities. And they were done by a contractor that was appointed by the Australian government. We were all part of a planning process. There was very little PNG government money involved with it. And so the Australian government procurement rules took place. So we weren't in charge of any of the procurement for the building. We participated in the design and the just the planning and making sure things were going to plan as we went. There was an interruption, 2021 COVID for a little while, and then the large, most of the construction was all completed in 2013, sorry, 2023 it was completed. From there, most everything was handed over, just little bits and pieces. And then there was new water facilities, new energy plants, new mortuaries tacked on the end of it, the new family support center, surgical wards, ICU, all that. So essentially, it was all, Angar was rebuilt. We're in the process now, working with the Australian government, of rebuilding the Guaray Wing, which is a big white square building, which was kind of the center of Angar before. Everything, as far as the plans, our plans, working with the Australian government, the plan of this facility, NDOH, I mean, they participated in the planning of the facility to meet all the standards. The standards branch of NDOH is obviously heavily involved, and they signed up on everything as far as meeting standards. And it was handed over in good condition, and over a while, there's some defects began to show up. Now, there's, we put on a facilities maintenance team as part of this as well to look after and provide some, you know, maintenance to these complex facilities. We have gone into some maintenance contracts with other suppliers to help maintain some of these facilities. Dr. Bingham, Dr. James, and Dr. Corporate Services can give you more details about their specific contracts. But that, Chairman, is a nutshell of what's happened.
Okay. All right, Chairman, thank you very much. Generally, the board is happy with all the refurbishments and everything that has taken place.
Yes, we're very pleased with our partnership with the Australian government and the government of Papua New Guinea and other partners who've come into assistance.
Thank you. CEO, in your view, what would you say about the refurbishments? What more would you like to see happen? Did they miss out anything? You give your views on this.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to have this call and speak on there for the team on the health issues. So when Angar redevelopment was done, infrastructure-wise, it's up to the standard, it was Australian When it was handed over, it was mid-June 2023. This was a very unique project in the sense that it was not only infrastructure. During the course of the project, there was also technical training done by clinicians from Australia coming, partnering with our clinicians to ensure that the equipments properly commissioned and handed over. So this would be the first commissioned hospital in Papua New Guinea to be actually used. This was the properly commissioned and used is the redeveloped Angar Hospital. And so we are very proud and thankful to the Australian government for ensuring that we have done that. One of the big setbacks during, when I took office and I realized was that it was from the HR perspective, because we had an Angar structure that was for 2008 at the time. So we haven't restructured it. During that time, we managed to become a PHA. So what I'm trying to say is that you have a limited number of staff in the old Angar, and now you have a much bigger Angar facility, which requires additional manpower. So when we talk about HR, I probably go down a bit on that. That was one of the big challenges we had with the facility. Taking over the facility when it was handed over to us, all the service contracts to maintain the facility was also handed over to us with the costs and the contracts and the contractors by the Australian team, the JID, the person who was managing the project. So they handed over all the contract to us, and that was, the cost was within $8 million kina to maintain the service contracts. Chair, my good chair, we've been, as a PHA, we've taken that on board into our budgets year in, year out. But I'm very sad to say that we are not supported in that aspect. And so when it comes to maintenance, you can only do so much when you're competing with other priorities like shortages of drugs, others. That becomes a big challenge for you when you're actually sitting in the office that I'm sitting in and trying to manage. So those were some of our challenges that we had. We affected this since it was given to us in mid-2023, or 2024, and then 2024 to 2025, but still we've not got, we've even given special submissions to Treasury because of, as a special case for Angar. But unfortunately, we didn't get the funds to support that. Those are some of the comments that I just want to make. Otherwise, in terms of the infrastructure and the end, you know, the commission that was well done. Just another point on this, I'd share to you is that when the agreement was signed, it was a 50-50 percent, 50% 50-50 agreement, a kina for kina, which means that Australian government had done their 50,000, 50% upfront, which is the, if you do have an opportunity to visit Angar tomorrow, then you will appreciate what I'm trying to say. So the front bit of, that is the 50% by the Australian government. The next bit of the master plan is supposed to be from our PNG government to match that. We are slowly trying to get traction to that in terms of funding and slowly moving up to that. So we've gotten some money, I think about a year ago. There's a lot of movement at the moment, so we should give a contractor on to build one or two wards. But when we work around tomorrow, we will explain that further. Chair, while I have the opportunity, let me also just quickly, just as a way of giving some financial.
We'll come to finance later.
Okay, so I'll stop, I'll stop.
We're just talking about the infrastructure and the facility itself. We'll go down that way.
All right, thank you.
All right. So generally, you're telling the Parliament, you're telling the committee and the Parliament that the infrastructure is world-class.
Yes.
It's good, everything is there.
Correct.
Okay. What about instruments? Instruments that you need at the hospital?
At the hospital, when they gave, they also gave it good equipments and instruments. We had a lot of, most of the whole new front of ours, we had new X-ray machines, city scans, good bedding facilities, basically the equipments. We also accompanied the infrastructure as well.
Latest state-of-the-art.
Yes.
Equipment, medical equipment.
Yes. Except for the theatres, we had only, two theatres only were equipped, the other two are just still there for us to fit in the equipments and later on to use. But apart from that, I think all the other wards, including ICU and the front of ours, the emergency COPD and all the equipments were fit for purpose and functioning when we receive it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chair. We are still talking about infrastructure. We will touch human resource, we will touch finance later. We're just talking about the infrastructure.
Sure, thank you.
That is already given to us by our friends from Australia. I will now ask my two committee members if they have any questions with regard to the infrastructure at Angar.
The chairman of PHA touched on some defects. Would you be able to sort of elaborate on that?
No, I'm just saying, over time, but not initially, over time, we found things that little glitches in them, and those have been corrected for the most part. Just things within the power system and others. But we'll put it this way, I think some of the designs, the modern state-of-the-art designs that come into PNG aren't always PNG-proof.
Exactly.
All right? And over time, if you have the power go off 3,000 times in a couple of years, it's going to wear off all these switches. So it's just, it's, things like that have come up over time, and those need to be looked at and carefully and say, how do we find better fixes for that? So we still don't have some of these problems that we're talking about today.
Okay, so we just need to look at some ways to improve and insulate, you know, this.
Yeah.
And it's always costly, right?
Yes.
And I'll just go to a question with regards to the designs. So Peter Presentation, you're saying that you have a master plan. Our friends from Australia have come with their component. So they've completed their part of the master plan. We also hear that the PNG government hasn't come good with their share. So can we agree to the point that we are 50% complete in the master plan? Or what is the scope of this master plan and how far have we come in terms of completion?
That would be a first statement to make, about 50%, but not to say that we have not received any money at all from PNG government. But PNG government has given us some money about a year ago. We are here to do one or two wards, but that's going to slowly build in. So as we walk to tomorrow, you will appreciate more better when you are actually on campus.
So CEO, just give me some clarity. In terms of the master plan, were we 50%?
50%.
60%?
50%.
50% of the master plan?
No, sorry, can I just butt in for a second? The master plan was done with all of us in mind, okay? So it was a plan that's come up with, you know, the Angar Hospital at the time, PNG government through the National Department of Health, other core agencies within the government, the Australian government. We came up with a plan, and it was meant to be half-funded by PNG and half-funded by the government of Australia. In the end, the government of PNG didn't put money in, and there was another meeting, which was above our heads, where the government of Australia decided, okay, we've already started on this path, we will go ahead and fund it. So it's not, you know, so the full plan as it was planned was completed. It was just like the funding component where PNG government wasn't have that. Part of this joint understanding again, 2013, was kina for kina matching for this new project. And that part didn't happen. But as Dr. Bingham says, the government, you know, PNG government put bits and pieces into it, a lot of technical assistance through the National Department of Health Standards Branch and planning and things like that. So it's not, it's not like it's an incomplete plan, it's just that the government of PNG didn't put their money in as they were initially going to.
Okay, but the full plan was completed?
Yeah. The plan is agreed by everybody, including the National Department of Health, everybody was completed, yes.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right, thank you. Let's go, let's go to the maintenance side of things. If I hear correctly, you said the builder, the contractor that was engaged by the Australian government, gave you the costings for maintenance and also the contractor? They chose the contractor to do maintenance every year? Can you confirm that?
Yes, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Yes, they've given, when they gave over the facilities, they also gave us the contractors with the costings that was also affected in our budget. That's also one of the documents that is here with me that we can submit later. And so we factored in the budget, and then, as I've said, we've not been really supported well in that front. And so when it comes to actually carrying this on out, bringing the contractors in you, because you have to sign service law agreement and pay out, so we were unable to do that. And so that becomes a big gap for us in terms of maintaining some of those important facilities. Basically, what we are doing now is kind of an ad hoc kind of thing. It's not like one, like you sign up for service maintenance, but, you know, they do things, they went, because faulty, then you call them in. So we are kind of pushed to that, that kind of honor to do this, to do this kind of maintenance work at this point in time.
Thank you, Chairman. PHA Chairman, this arrangement where you don't get to choose your contractor, the person who built the infrastructure gave you the contractor and the maintenance budget, how did that come about? What kind of arrangement was that?
That was the arrangement where, you know, it was like, they built it, they said there's maintenance contracts, which they paid for a while. So the maintenance contracts were in place, they came, they came along with the facility. So, yeah.
That's going to go on for how long?
It's as long as, as long as we want it to, all right? So we're in the process of looking at other contractors to do some of this work, more locally-based contractors.
So the cost they gave was $8 million kina per annum?
In total.
Total.
For ongoing maintenance.
Ongoing.
Ongoing maintenance of the facility. So these maintenance contracts. And as Dr. Bingham said, every year, we do a budget, we do a zero-based budget, we look at all the costs for Angar and every other facility in Morroby Province. We submit something, and somebody just decides to cut the budget, you know? When we started this process, the agreement between us all, you know, NDOH, Angar, Government of Australia, everybody, was it like, Angar would take a minimum operation budget of $50 million kina a year to be sustained in the new form. And every year, we get a fraction of that. So as Dr. Bingham says, you know, the team, the team has to make, has to make priorities. They don't have to set priorities, where do you spend the limited amount of funds? We do supplemental budgets, we talk to our friends about it, can we get more funding? I mean, we've got a great facility, but we need more maintenance funds. And along with the funds, it's maintenance funds, it's personnel, I mean, some of the personnel we can contract out. But it's just having that basic set of funds that we need to maintain these facilities, and it just doesn't come.
Chairman, on top of your head, since the hospital was handed over to your management, how much money have you spent on maintenance so far?
I don't have that number handy.
Okay, that's all right.
I'll get it to you later.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, excuse my ignorance, when you say maintenance, are you able to elaborate on what do we mean by maintenance as far as your hospital is concerned?
Okay, so, I mean, maintenance is basic maintenance of all the facilities that were there. It's the, it's the energy plant, it's the water system, it's the air cons, it's the equipment, it's, you know, the X-ray imaging equipment, all those types of things all put together. So, you know, when you look at facilities as a whole, it's just not a building, it's everything that's in the building as well that needs to be maintained. And we keep putting a case up, we need these funds to maintain all this equipment.
Because what I just mentioned are the key areas, so I just needed them to be mentioned so, you know, so we can go back to Parliament and report in detail.
Yeah. And that's, and that's what the board's working on now, is like, how do we, you know, prioritize with the funds that we get? You know, we support the management, we're not a board of management, we're the board of governance. So at the end of the day, we have a CEO and a senior management team, they have to run it, they have, we help, we're there to help them, a very committed board to help.
Yes.
We just need more resources. Thank you.
Sorry, Chairman, I'll just intervene again. I just want to come back to the design and planning. When the master plan was designed, and it's really the basis of this inquiry, was the power and generator included in this scope of planning and design?
Yes, there's an energy plant. I mean, everybody knew at the time, too, the unreliability of mains power in LA. So there was a central energy plant that was built in with the project.
And it's also part of the maintenance that you are talking about?
Yes, it is.
So, Chairman, this maintenance company recommended to you by the, our friends from Australia, is it Australian-based company or a PNG-based company?
Chair, can I just answer this?
As a CEO.
A lot of them are based within the, within LA, but they've got, there's experts, connection to Australia, so they need some expert advice, but most of them are within the, within LA itself, but the systems themselves, some of them are quite complex. Like, for instance, the generator itself, you cannot get source the, some of the parts locally here in the, in our local markets. So those are some of those challenges we faced when we actually started using the facilities. Just going back on the, one of the members' question was regarding the energy plant, we've got, when they build, they've given us three generators. The generator is one capacity, one generator is about 1,000 kilowatts of generator. So total is 3,000, so it's about 3,000 megawatts or something like that. Hospital capacity at the moment is about 850 kilowatts, so which means that in principle, one generator can carry, carry the load. Yeah, thanks.
Instrumentation, equipment in the hospital, who does the maintenance of all this equipment?
I'll ask my director of medical services.
Okay, Director Medical Services, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. We've got, during the engagement of this infrastructure, there were several biomedical companies engaged, like for X-rays, we had one company, and they were also engaged with others. So we had several service contracts aligned with several service providers. So, and that were tied down to the maintenance contracts that were given. So once, when the transition happened, we could not sustain those contracts. So we had to resort to our own local capacity or local skill set, but when it went beyond, we had to sought externally to bring in the service maintenance team.
Thank you very much, Director. If we don't have any more issues on the infrastructure, and we can move on to other matters. Okay, let's touch on your human resource. Like you said in your introductory address, we had all Angar, and now we have new Angar. All Angar, your staff capacity was not that, up to that level, but after you have your new facility, you have to have enough staff to maintain the whole facility. So just, CEO, just get us through your issue of your human resource and staffing at the hospital.
Thank you, Chair. Morroby PHA, let me start by saying, we not only enjoyed the Angar refurbishment as a new infrastructure, but we also are very thankful to the Australian government that also gave us some new facilities in the province, like Ten City, West Arrakha, these are urban level three facilities, similar to the one built in Anwar, but I believe now, that's the kind of same setup. We also had Mudgee and Bululobin, also, the district hospitals been built during that time Angar was being developed, they also, there was concurrently, these works were going on also. So Angar, when we, Angar, and when we became a PHA in 2019, and when I took office, we had a total ceiling of, the Morroby PHA, total ceiling of 1,887 staff ceiling. This was basically migrating the, what was already established in the old Angar Hospital and what was already existing in the rural public space under the provincial government, the ones in the districts.
Oh, total for?
Total, when we, yes, so when we.
All Morroby Province.
So Marib, off the top of my head, I think Angar would be anything between probably around 800 to 900, 900 staff, but we'll just have to confirm that properly and give it, but otherwise, so we had a total of, when we merged, we had a total of 860 vacancies of the 1,800 and.
That's for the entire province?
That's for the entire province. And so for us and the management to actually get it all the way to the place where we could advertise, it took me almost three years to do that. The systems within ourselves are just very lengthy, even the portions is hours to do. So we just went on last year, and I just went on early this year, we're concluding the remaining 517 to be recruited on, hopefully before the end of December, we should get, get them on. And so basically, in a nutshell, what I'm trying to say, my good minister, is that there was a challenge in the HR, even if we fill all the portions, we will still have gaps in terms of service provisions with the population, the doctor-patient ratios and necesses. So what have we done from Morroby PHA to address this? Well, we have asked, this is one of the work that has been recently done, that we've asked WHO to come, and we have done what they, what a work called Wising, is a workforce indicator load, load analysis that you do to determine what kind of workforce you need. workforce you need and how many people you need. So that, that work, I think we're one of the first PHAs to do that. So we've completed for Angao and we also completed for the, the districts. We, I'm waiting for the report to come, that will form the basis for which we are now gonna properly restructure the PHA as far as the manpower is concerned, it's gonna be an evidence-based restructure in twenty twenty-six moving forward. So we are hoping that we should complete our recruitment for the remaining five hundred and seventeen personnel, hopefully before the end of this year. I was just given a green light from my secretary that she just signed off about two or three days ago, Secretary DPM, so we should be working around that. That's basically, just to come back on the point that I made earlier, when you build a new infrastructure, for instance, Bololo Hospital, I'm using Bololo as an example, when we build a new infrastructure according to the standards, you will require at least about fifty to sixty people to main a personnel to main a level four facility, to, to deliver the minimum standard of service delivery.
That's doctors, nurses?
Yes, yes, everybody.
In that facility?
Yes, yes. So Bololo now has about thirty-eight, that's, that's because of the old structure that we just met, which means that we are not, and even if the facility is built, we'll be still unable to, you know, provide all the necessary level four service added facility. So those are some of the real, real situation that we have faced with. And I'll stop here, thank you. Dr. Jevon, do you say something later?
Thank you, Chairman. I think one of the other thing too in terms of infrastructure, the previous Angao, we were closed, smaller rooms and workstations were closely knitted together. With this massive infrastructure now, the small number of staff have been diffusely sort of extended. So if you compare the emergency department, the previous emergency department, things were closed by. So if you had nine or ten staff working, they can see what's happening on the next side. Now with this huge infrastructure, it's scattered. So what's happening there cannot be seen by the person right out in front. So in a way, the infrastructure itself demands for us to increase our capacity to, you know, provide that kind of service that we need. That's in terms of infrastructure and capacity. The other thing is, when a new infrastructure and equipments are put, you also need to have skillset, the skillset to maintain and fully utilize some of those equipments. So that's also another challenge that, you know, kept us to, thank you.
Any questions to, for human resource? Human resource?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of questions. CEO and of course, I would like the provincial administrator to intervene here. In terms of the staff capacity, what is, what is the capacity, the right number? You're saying there's about eight, nine hundred, but what is your real figure? How many staff do you ideally require in Angao? Why I say this is because we all know that Angao is the kind of the referral regional hospital. You have Highlands, Madang, and some other provinces that also have access to Angao. So how short are you in terms of that manpower?
I will answer the two, two phases. One is my just personal opinion, I think what we need is, we are probably operating off half the, the staff that is required for Angao at the moment. That's what it's looked like. The, when I get a report from the Wising team, I haven't received a report yet, the WHO team that came and did the work, they will actually give us the, the total number based on the evidences that are available to us. So we, I'm here to get a report from that, but just from the top of my head, we are probably operating at half of what we might require to really have meet the requirements, because the catchment population for Angao is within four point five to five million. We've got outpatient, people coming attendance of about sixty-seven, about sixty-five to sixty, hundred and seventy thousand outpatient visits a year. And so the mortality rate for the hospital sits at about seven percent, that's like four to five deaths per day. We've got bed rates of about twenty-six to thirty babies a day has been delivered in Angao Hospital, so you can see the weight of services coming. I'm just on record, since the opening of the cancer facility of recent times, we also have created a demand for that service, because it's not offered elsewhere in the country. And so that is also compounded in the number of people coming into and accessing our facilities for service and putting demand also back onto the resources that is available to provide that service. Thank you.
Thank you, CEO. Administrator, just going back to what CEO was saying, how are, the, how is the provincial government and the PHA collaborating in these efforts to fill these gaps with DPM? Is there any collaboration between the provincial government and the PHA in terms of putting your efforts together to get DPM to fill these gaps there?
Thank you. We do, we do work in collaboration, but because a national health department is, is the responsible of the health departments, so in terms of their manpower, they, they look at their manpower themselves, but we do support them in terms of budgeting and so forth.
Thank you, honorable member. Just, just adding on, thank you provincial administrator, I think the provincial government has also been supportive. Some of our workers, casual workers have been carried by the provincial government, especially in the rural facilities. While we are waiting for this DPM process, it's a very lengthy process, and then some of them have been carrying it for ten, fifteen, you know, sometimes they've been carrying that cost for us. So with this recent recruitment, we're trying to overflow that so that we get them permanently onto our current structures that we have. But again, as I've said, these are just feeling what the, the positions that we had some ten, fifteen years back. It's not what we currently require like right, right now.
So, CEO, you, you were saying that it's a lengthy process, is there a reason why, you know, it's taken so long and you're still at fifty percent capacity?
The, Angao, just, just for the record, Angao will probably fill in most of our positions already now, with, with the current structure that we have. But when I'm saying fifty percent is the actual manpower we might need to actually fully run the hospital, well, that's where I, that's where I came from. But in terms of the manpower of Angao, I think we've filled most of them with, it's probably less than twenty people or thirty people that is vacancies that still exist in Angao, but most of the positions have been, have been already filled to date.
CEO, I know you offer certain specialist medical services in, in this hospital. In those specialist medical services, you have personnel assigned, you don't have any shortages for this specialized medical care that you offer in your hospital?
Thank you, Chair. I think I'll leave it to my director to answer that, and I'll take a cue from him. Thanks.
Thank you, Chairman. As I said, let's probably put it in a way against measuring the population. We've got, in all the seventeen disciplines of clinical areas, we've got specialists available, but not the required amount to meet the current population demand. So that's still, there's still a clinician to population ratio. So that's the current setting that we have.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Chair, thank you. Just, just a way of probably just figures, yeah, I've got some numbers here, like for PNG, we've got about one, one to seventeen thousand, that's doctor to patient ratio.
Yes.
So for Morobe, we've got like one to twenty thousand, that's based on the projections of our, the population that we are using through the ENHIS.
One to thirty thousand.
For HTOs, it's like one to fifteen thousand, and for Morobe, it's like one to thirty-four thousand. For nurses, it's like one to five hundred and eleven, for PNG, and Morobe is like one is to three thousand. CHWs is like one is to one thousand in PNG, and Morobe is like one is to two thousand. So those are, those are some numbers that you can quickly, just, just to make, create the picture in your mind as to the challenges we have in HR. Thanks.
You can provide us that later on, after the inquiry, we would need that to establish our reports. If there's anything, if there's nothing else on human resource, we go on to something else. Members? Yeah, you can ask later on. Now let's start on to finances.
Your favorite, CEO, your favorite subject.
The chairman mentioned something about you've got your budget ceiling that you submit to planning yearly, but you're getting a fraction of it. See, Chairman, just get us through some figures of your annual budget for the hospital and how much you're getting since the establishment of Morobe Provincial Health Authority. Give us those figures. Or if you have them on record, you can give it what's just
We'll, we'll give you the, we'll give you the figures later, but essentially what, you know, over the last couple of years, what's happened is, we'll go ahead and do a zero-based budget. So we'll look at Angao, we'll look at all the facilities across Morbey and say, what do we need to address these things? Example for this, this coming year, you know, with the twenty twenty-six budget with the submission that's gone in, it was just under four hundred million. All right. And that's with new facilities in Angao, that's with, yeah, so we'll give, we'll give you the numbers, but essentially, four hundred and eleven million, if we want zero, zero-based budget, you know, last year was three hundred, I'm sorry, four hundred and thirty-seven million. Year before, three hundred million. All right. But every year, we get maybe a quarter of that, maybe a third of that. The, the numbers we can, we can give you, but it just, it makes it difficult for the senior management team to sit then and go, okay, how do you prioritize where, where the money's spent, what little money that comes in? You know, especially when it's compounded by the, the matters of you don't have, you don't have the drugs, centrally supplied drugs coming in. All right, so we're not, we don't purchase our own drugs, it's still supplied through the AMS system. All right, so Angao orders directly now, but the districts still go through AMS. And so not, not all the drugs come in, when the, when the district health managers put their orders, they don't get a full order. All right, Angao puts in the order, it doesn't come direct, we have to reconcile everything, and then go have to find, use money that we don't have to go find drugs. Thankfully, the provincial government has come good with some of the, some money, some of the DDAs have come good to help in their respective districts, and we, and we, we know, everybody tries to chip in. But it makes it really difficult when we sit there as a board, it's like, why do we, you know, why do we do these things? Why do we want to help? We try to say, okay, fine, this is what it's gonna take in this district, this district, Angao, everywhere. And then we, we do all that work and then nothing comes back. It's like, there's arbitrary cuts somewhere, and we know that PNG, you know, doesn't have all the money it, it needs to fix everything, but it's like, how do we do a better job at budgeting and how do we reprioritize health as, as, you know, a right for Papua New Guineans? So it's not just a Morobe issue, it's, it's a countrywide issue, as we're all aware. Happens in Morsby, it happens in Alatau, it happens in Bogia, everywhere there, there are issues. We just get hit a bit harder because all roads lead to lay. Everybody ends up here. As Dr. Bingu mentioned, part of the thing that we had the Australian government spend some money on when we were doing development project was open up some new facilities for us at Mutsing, at Bololo, while we're a district, a few other places, is to try to ease the load. So the, the reason being, if you have district facilities opened up, there's fewer people coming into lay. But doesn't, if, if the medicine's not getting out there, people are still gonna come to lay looking for medicine. And then other parts of Papua Guinea, Madang, Highlands, even parts of NGI, and now with the cancer, everybody ends up in lay as well. So, so everybody seems to be converging in lay, and we need to see, you know, how we, as a, as a country, how do we address these, these issues? And it's Morobe specific, but it's, it's a countrywide issue.
Thank you, Chair. CEO, you might like to add on something?
Thank, thank, thank you, Chair. I think finance is a, it's a big issue, yes. Our colleague is smiling right there, but thank you, high honourable members. So let me just draw down, because of the maintenance thing, let me just draw down what we put in twenty twenty-five to just illustrate, try to illustrate what our chairman has said. So in twenty twenty-five, we, we submitted a total budget for twenty, for, of four hundred and seven million eight hundred and seventy-five, and of that, four hundred and seven million eight hundred and seventy-five thousand six hundred. Let me just zoom down, half of that is PIP, so, but let me just zoom down to the GS component. That's the one that actually helps us, goods and services for running of operations. So let me just zoom down on that, just to paint a picture. So the goods and services component, what we submitted for was ninety-six million, this is excluding PE, this is excluding PE. We were appropriated in, in that year for this year, nineteen million. That's twenty-one percent of what we actually asked for. And if you are not receiving, and now they have given fifty-one percent to date, of the twenty-one percent that were asked for, you can see where we are cornered in terms of trying to run a, a service, we're not a profit generating organization, we're a service oriented. Let me zoom down on the maintenance, fuel and maintenance, that's the big one for us, because the generators, when they have been running for the last two weeks, has been consuming about three thousand liters per day. And, and this are costs that we don't have in our budget, so we are writing to Treasury, are planning to allow us to use, actually now we receive project money to actually run this later, I'll be answerable to them to try and explain this, because we are pushed to this corner now. I'm, I'm very pushed. If I don't use project money, we'll close down the hospital operations, period. And so maintenance, we, for maintenance, we submitted for twelve million, eight million for the, and then the others is for the other, other, others, we are called maintenance and others. So that went up to twelve million. We appropriated this year, Chair, of two hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and ten thousand, which is two percent of what we actually asked for. And so fuel also, we were, we submitted for about seven million, and we were given six hundred and seventy thousand, of only nine percent of what we asked for. And there lies the big elephant in the room, in my view.
Can you come back to the numbers for fuel?
So the maintenance for two thousand and twenty-five budget submission was, we submitted a total of twelve million, one hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred thousand kina. The appropriation that was given to us was two hundred and ten thousand kina. So from twelve million and two hundred and ten thousand, so in terms of percentage, we got only two percent appropriated for that particular area as per our request. So that's, that's basically just to make that point clear. Thank you, Chair. Fuel, fuel, we submitted for seven hundred, ah, sorry, seven million, two hundred and twenty, twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred kina. We've got appropriation of six hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred kina, which is about nine percent of what was actually asked for. Six hundred, I will provide that, but it's six hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred kina was actually appropriated for, for this, this year's budget. So that's about nine percent of what we actually initially asked for. So if, if you look at it like the overall, we've received just twenty-one, twenty-one percent of the GST that we actually asked for, twenty percent, twenty-one percent. It's not even fifty or, or thirty percent or something, it's twenty-one, and that really is a, a big challenge, so just for the committee to take note. Thank you.
Thank you, CEO and Chairman. When you talk about four hundred plus million kina for the entire operations of the hospital, that includes emoluments, maintenance, goods and services, PIP, everything. Okay, all right. So all these monies are paid to you, or they're kept in Wagani? The four hundred plus million kina that you asked for?
So, Chair, let me
What do you get and what's kept with the department?
So from the four hundred and, that's, that's our submission, what we think we require to run operations for twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
The appropriation that was actually given to us?
Yes.
That's ninety-nine million, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred. Okay, although I went down and tried to break it down for
Break it down?
Yeah, yeah.
To, to the Goods and services?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And fuel and maintenance?
So the actual one is nineteen, uh, the So the actual one is 90, uh, the actual appropriation to us is, uh, 99,127,500 for this year, 2025. Which, yeah, which is 24% of what we kind of asked for, including the PIP and operations.
24%?
Yeah, including PIP, but if you go operations alone, it's 21% of what we've asked for.
And just if I might interrupt, Chairman, it's, that, that's not the hospital, that's all of Morroby.
Morroby Province.
Morroby Province, that's all, all the facilities.
All right, that explains a lot. Anything else on finance? All right, thank you very much. We've covered infrastructure and the issues there, human resource and your finances. But I know you've got in detail, uh, in your records, and you will provide it to the committee after that. Now I would like to zoom into the issue that we had within that period of two days or 20 hours when there was a blackout. Okay? I think I heard you say the mortality rate in Angao is between four to five deaths per day. On average, okay. Now, who, who would be in a better position to explain to the committee within that period of time when the power went off? And those deaths that occurred in which particular areas? Can, can someone in a better position in that area just go in detail, some, some detail and explain to the committee what happened? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I will ask my director Curative, I think he's got a report there, summary, so he will present to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. As Per stated in the media, we had about seven deaths. According to documentations and reports on the ground, we had five actual inpatient deaths and two were actually deaths on arrival during that period. Inpatient deaths, we had four. The fifth one was someone who came into the emergency department during that time, wasn't fully wet and then succumbed. So it was a cubicle death. The other four, which I have all inpatient documentation here. If the committee allows, then I can just go through each one of them.
Yes, we would like to. No, but each one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The first case we had was someone identified by Jayhen. Uh, he was 73 years old, was a former Public Seven, Public Seven. He came into the hospital, admitted as a case of hypotensive hemorrhagic stroke. So he was actually bleeding within his, yeah. So he was admitted on the, uh, he was admitted on the 16th and passed on on the 19th. So he was someone who had a stroke and slowly progressively deteriorating. The death was unable to be or non-preventable. The second case was a case identified by JW, a female of 28, was initially admitted through our labor ward or option guiding and then the next day transferred over to intensive care unit. She presented with TB meningitis, TB in the brain, but she was also, uh, pregnant, 26, 28 weeks gestation. She was admitted on the 11th of October into ICU. And on the 16th, she was diagnosed as already having brainstem death. Prognosis, everything discussed with family and it was a case that was slowly succumbing. Case number three, was someone who came in, identified Anhai, but after he had passed on, relatives came forward changing the name saying Vivi. Was a male of 49. He was admitted on the 4th of October with history of abdominal pains, longstanding history of abdominal pains, headaches. So he was someone who had disseminated TB query, some sort of gastrointestinal malignancy. He also had, had a liver issues which were slowly progressing. So he was also someone who was unfortunate at that time to have succumbed. But he was also a case of non-preventable death. The fourth case was someone who was admitted to one of our medical wards with, uh, advanced breast cancer who also had metastasis or spread to the brain. She was admitted on the 29th of September and then succumbed early hours of the 19th. That was also a progressive, uh, case of deterioration. The fifth one was a male of 36 years old. Unfortunately, presented during the time when we had power issues, but he came in presenting as a case of seizures and also differential diagnosis of TB in the brain as well. And he was kept in the emergency and we could not have time to actually assess him. But he passed on whilst he came in at the emergency department. So those were the five cases that we came across. The other two were all deaths on arrival when they came during that period. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. Please advise the committee, were there any deaths directly related to power blackout?
Thank you, Chairman. According to reports, we received, there's none directly, but associated in terms of like ventilators, like, like the case in ICU. It required regular power, power supply of the ventilator. But then the contingency at that time was to manually beg. The other bit which we suspected for the emergency case may have been due to, uh, power dependent succions, pulling of secretions dead. So there were no case that we identified directly as a cause of power outage. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. Please agree with us, uh, there were no deaths related to, directly related to power blackout, except that one particular case in the ICU where someone's got some relation to, uh, equipment not functioning during the time of death.
Yes, I think basically the time lapse, the ventilators usually have backup powers, but the period extended for too long. That's why we couldn't sustain.
Yep, okay. So we can all agree and say that, that particular case was somewhat related to the power blackout. If there was power on, he could have been saved, right?
Uh, not really. It, it was a case of brainstem death already, so either power was on or off.
So we'll say it was 50/50?
Yep.
All right, thank you. CEO, you got something to add on?
Uh, thank you, Chair. My background is a physician. I've been head of internal medicine for a couple of hospitals before taking up the role as CEO. As a professional person, when a GCS is low and going down to three, the likelihood of person coming out is very, very unlikely. And even on a ventilator or without a ventilator and GCS, and then you do a brainstem assessment and you don't have any response from the brainstem, which means that there's no connectivity between the brain and the heart. The heart is just going on its own until, so basically what I related when the doctors explained to them was just waiting for the heart when it was going to stop. Unfortunately, it happened during the time when the power went out and we had to switch to, and, and they had to go and beg. So that's from a professional perspective, that's my opinion, thank you.
Can we, members, any questions regarding these deaths?
Thank you, Chairman. CEO and Dr. Stephen. I just wanted to ask a question in terms of your system, the emergency system, the maintenance and the backup. This is, let's say into the future. Does that system guarantee, ask that when the power goes off, it comes on, the system is working properly? Can you give that assurance here?
All right, thank you. This incident, the recent weeks, has really sit down and look at the whole systems for ourselves again. I mean, we had this backup power thing we thought normally will kick in within a minute or two. That never happened because of a major technical fault that happened. So we, from, from the power perspective, we have got some plans in place to look at how we're gonna move, uh, address this moving forward, let me put it in that context. We may have batteries, uh, we've looked at also the, the possibilities of event standby, um, additional battery operated suction machines that are also being explored during our meeting with the board. We've got one or two there, but I think perhaps it's high time that we probably might look at getting, you know, some more. In terms of power, I brought this power thing up when initially when I took office and I realized that this system that we had was gonna be, it's, it's a complex one. But we, we didn't have those little money that we are asking so that we could do, uh, smaller generators. That's now the quantity is planned. So you've got this PPL coming in, uh, and then you've got the, our big generators that, that we've just discussed. We are now looking at the smaller ones that can be tied in to look after different important sections like ICU, uh, emergency departments. So that, that's the talk that we're having with our technical team to see how we can best fit that as an option. And of the way forward in terms of consistent power and reliable power is solar. We've, we've put in a submission for in our 2026 budget already, uh, in a PIP submission because we were expecting this, forcing power is a big issue. It's not because of the incident, we already saw this. And as part of planning, we submitted already for a PIP for considering solar and that is now, uh, gonna be for considerations. Thank you.
Thank you. Our leaders of Morroby have been frequently asking questions about PNG Power. How frequent are those blackouts on a daily basis? And as the chairman, have you elevated this to some level? Or have you brought it to the attention of PNG Power and authorities?
We, we, through the lay chamber of commerce, we bring this to the attention of the authorities every single day, MP. Every, every single day, we bring it to the attention of the MPs, we bring it to the attention of PNG Power. We, in lay, we tend to take these things through the lay chamber of commerce and it happens all the time. Just what the other night, like on Sunday, when you guys, they were trying to reinstall the PNG Power mains back again. During that process, it went out seven times, off and on seven times. But as I mentioned earlier, for the first few years after the handover of the facilities, there's been over, over 3,000 of these switches. And so 3,000 of these on and off, on and offs for the automatic switches. And what happens is these things burn out. It just can't sustain it. So we're trying to say, is there a workaround to find something that can withstand that kind of punishment? Because that's, that's a lot of punishment on the system. Is there a different way we can work around? Part of it's a solar for, for some parts of the hospital, others would be back, other backup gen sets, um, you know, specifically designated to a particular area. But, uh, yeah, it's, it's elevated on a daily basis by everybody in lay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, thank you, member. If we start to talk about PNG Power, we're gonna go until next day. So we will just go to trade on the issues of the deaths, the seven deaths that occurred within that period of time. Just wanna establish if they're directly related to the power outages within that period of time. So CEO, uh, on that date, you had, we were informed, the parliament was informed, you had 20 hours of hospital without power. Can you confirm that? 20 hours?
Uh, Chair, yes, I can confirm that, I was with the team, uh, all, all the time. I confirmed that, yes, thank you.
So we had, we had no power whatsoever at all in the old premises of the facility?
Not really. We had, we, we've got another PNG Power and a generator separate that was running there at our old ward. When you go down, we will, so you, but it was the new establishment where ICU and the, the theaters and the front of house operations. The main cooperation area was of, out of power.
All right, Chairman, we have to get this right. The leaders will have to understand this. So you have to explain to us properly. You know, for us, as members of parliament, sitting in parliament and listening to your leaders asking questions, to us, it, it meant the whole hospital, Angao Hospital was without power for 20 hours. We have to get that straight. Please advise the committee.
Chairman, thank you. When the new redevelopment came in, it came in with its own central energy plant supporting the new infrastructure. The whole bit that we had, had its existing backup gen set which was still there. So that means we have two different, uh, gen set backups supporting the whole hospital. The whole wing is usually supported by the whole generator that's there, backup gen set. Yes, no, not the 1,000 capacity, that's another one. The new, there's three new ones that caters for the new facility. But most of the wards are basically catered for by the whole generator that is there. So when PPL came back, the whole gen set had no issues. It was running and part of the hospital still had power coming back. But the new wing that was supported by the new, uh, central energy plant, that is the bit that had an issue.
Okay, Director. On that particular day, PNG Power went off, the old Angao facilities had power, the new facilities that were built by our friends from Australia had no power. Confirm that, please.
Yes.
That's, that's correct.
When PNG Power came back.
Hang on.
The old.
PNG Power went off.
Yep.
The old facilities had power because you had old standby generators running.
Yes.
You had power.
Yes.
It's only the new facility.
Yes.
That the power was not on for 20 hours. You confirm that, please?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Good. Okay, now we have three standby generators, you said, with the new facility? Three standby generators?
Yes, Chair, we have three standby generators. We call it, uh, we term it the central energy unit, so they're all in one, one place.
All right, good. Now what happened? What happened to those generators?
We've got some technical people here, do you want me to invite them? I'll invite.
Can someone from, or the contractor that is engaged by the hospital come and, come before the committee, please?
Thank you, come.
We want you before a microphone. Thank you. You state your name and your company. Thank you. You state your name and your company and what's your purpose in Angau?
Uh, good afternoon, Chairman, honourable members. Uh, my name is Desmond, Desmond Chalau. I run a company, FireTech Solutions. I was brought in to assist in restoring back power to the hospital.
You are a contractor to Angau Memorial Provincial Hospital, right?
Yes.
You were a contractor?
Yes.
Especially for power side?
At, uh, at this point in time, I was just called in to assist on power side, yes.
When were you engaged by Angau Hospital?
On this occasion, I think it was on the Saturday, Saturday of eighteenth, I think, yes.
So you were not a contractor, you were just called in because of that issue, right?
I, I'm not a contractor at the moment, but I was called in to assist in the issue.
Okay. Chairman of the Board of Angau, who, who is the contractor that's responsible for power generation in the old hospital? The old, old facility?
Okay, that Chair, can I answer that one? Thank you. So when we entered over the facility, they given the electrical contractor was O D G. O D G, and O D G has now so slowly scaled down and they're not fully operational. And the person who knew the systems, Desmond was working with O D G at the time and he knew that complex system better than anyone else. And so the decision the management made was based on the technical personnel that knew the system. So that's the reason why he and also another contractor that back was engaged to help us bring back the power into Angau.
Alright, thank you CEO. So now you put us in, in a clear perspective. So you understand how the system operated because you were part of the team that put it in place, okay? Good. Now, what happened? What happened to the three standby generators when PNG Power went off?
Um, well, I was called on a bit later during the breakdown, but the central energy plant that has been explained so far, the three generators did not, uh, were not able to be put online. The reason being, the main circuit breaker that was in at fault at that time, the PNG Power breaker, had to be opened, had to be in, in an open position before we could start the generators and put them online.
Are those systems automatic? Do they switch on and off on their own?
Yes, they do.
But how come at this time, it didn't work out that way? How it supposed to be?
Yes, because, because the main PNG Power, Power Circuit Breaker that supplies the hospital, if, it's, uh, it's, it's wired in a way where, um, because it's a high voltage system, uh, PNG Power has to, the breaker itself has to be recognized, nice as physically open before the generators can come online. So if, even though there's no PNG Power reinstated to the facility, but the circuit breaker is left in a closed position, the generators will not start. So we therefore had to come and open it manually.
So that, that, that second breaker is beyond your, your scope, your, your jurisdiction? You can't touch that? That's PNG Power's job, right?
Uh, negative. The, the high voltage transfer switch is, belongs to the hospital, it's after the meter.
How come we didn't know that switch was not open?
Um, I was contacted later on during that day, but there was a previous contractor that was there on site before me. And the hospital, um, contacted me to ask for assistance and I came on site.
CEO, who, who did you ask to, to identify the, the cause of the problem?
Uh, the facilities team contacted one of our contractors. L R D is also in the room, uh, so they came in to rectify the problems. So Chairman, the issue happened in the night at around nine thirty, thereabouts. Uh, our local team, our facility boys went and identified the issues. There was a fault in the breaker, there was a bent in the, there's a coil in the, there's the arm of the... This was in the night, high voltage area, it was risky. Uh, we didn't have, within ourselves in the hospital, the technical house to actually do this work. So that we brought the team in that knew the system. So when they went in, it was a hard work for, they had to open up the system and go all the way back, right at the back to release the, what was it again, you call it?
The circuit breaker.
That mechanism so that, that now will free the, the generators to come online. Because when it was open, it was telling the generators that PNG Power was still on. But when PNG Power's blackout, the generators couldn't kick in because of the faulty breaker at the back. So, but the, the work to actually do this, it was a complex system, Chair. It was not an easy job. Our team had to know their way around to actually go right to the back to get it out. So that, that was one of the big reasons why the, the delay was. Because we had to go at the back, release the, uh, the breaker and then get the, uh, generators up and running. So that happened on Sunday in the evening around five PM. We managed, the technical team managed to get the generators back online again.
Alright, okay. CEO, um, who, who is in charge of notifying your contractors that we have a situation with power?
Uh, we've got, we've got a facility manager, he's here, Kadi.
Okay, come. We're not finished with you yet. Now, according to the CEO, the power went out at nine PM, around nine PM. How long did it take you to get your other contractor on site?
Okay, I thank you Chair.
Sorry, state your name and your position in the hospital, what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Kadi Kalau and I'm the Facilities Manager for Moro Bay Provincial.
Facilities Manager?
Yes, for Moro Bay Provincial Health Authority. Um, the issue happened, um, in the night at nine, uh, around nine. We, the facilities team, uh, for the hospital itself, we tried to rectify the issue. Uh, we came in, we saw that the issue was beyond our control after so many hours of checking and trying to rectify the issue.
So, so you, you tried to do it yourself, right?
Uh, we fault find, we tried to troubleshoot.
The maintenance team for the hospital?
Yes.
You have a maintenance team?
Yes.
And you are the leader?
Yes.
So you tried to figure out why the generators are not coming on?
Correct.
For how long did you do that for?
Cannot give a time, but probably some hours. But when, once we found out that the, uh, what the issue was, we did not have the capability to attend it to, uh, do it ourselves. And it was, uh, probably some hours later. Uh, we did not get in touch with the contractors at that time because we did not have a service agreement with the contractors. Hence, we did not have call out, on-call capabilities. That's why we waited until, uh, we engaged them in the...
Next day?
Next day.
Next day?
First day in the morning.
Okay, so you brought in someone else and they had a look, they couldn't locate the problem?
They found where the problem was and, uh, most of the time we took was, as mentioned by our good CEO, we were trying to release the breaker. It's a big, uh, switchgear. So we were trying to release it just to enable the generators to close.
Did you call PNG Power at that time?
Uh, yes, we called PNG Power to pull the, uh, main dropout fuses from the service line coming in. We told them to just totally isolate it so we can have an isolated system to work.
Did you try to call PNG Power in the night, from nine o'clock till morning?
Yes, we called them and that, that was then they pulled the three dropout fuses that...
What time did they arrive on site?
Uh, doesn't come to mind right now, but I think...
Early hours of the morning, midnight?
Before midnight, I would say.
Before midnight?
Yeah.
So PNG Power did not, did not identify the problem?
Uh, it was in our jurisdiction hence, uh, we, uh, we did not engage PNG Power.
CEO, I don't understand. What's, what's the arrangement? Why can't PNG Power identify the problem and fix it there and then? Why do we have to wait for twenty hours?
My, uh, in my, in my understanding later, the technical people, Chair, is that the switchboard is our, our property as the PHA. And the breakers that are in there, we call it PNG Power, but it doesn't, it's not owned by PNG Power. It's the PNG Power line coming into that, that area, that's why we are calling it like it's the breaker for PNG Power. But actually, that whole switchboard is, is ours. And, and so by virtue of that, uh, and the systems that is in there, it's, it's quite complex. It's, it, and that's why we got this, uh, people who've been doing business with this particular circuit to come on, to actually fix it. And, and so that's, uh, basically how I understand the whole, whole, whole situation in terms of the call out. The call out to PNG Power was basically, because there was already a faulty breaker in there. So in case the power comes in and makes it worse, I think they called them out to just come and isolate the line from outside because there was this on and off thing. So the contractors could freely work on the... Unfortunately, the work itself was very highly technical and needed a lot of time to actually go and access the, the, the breakout at the back to get the generators back up and... That is my understanding, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you CEO. I, I, I still don't understand. Nine o'clock, you said PNG Power went off.
Nine thirty-eight, nine o'clock.
He's telling us PNG Power was on site before midnight. Where did the twenty hours come from? We were advised the facility was without power for twenty hours. Where did the twenty hours come from?
Uh, Chair, um, the twenty hours is correct. It's, it's the time that the, uh, there was no power. There was no power because when PNG Power went off, generators could not kick in. So that whole time was to rectify, uh, that issue.
And you said they arrived before midnight on site, right? PNG Power arrived midnight on site, but they can't do anything?
Uh, PNG Power cannot do anything because, uh, as mentioned by our good CEO, they only come up to the utilities line, uh, from inside. Even if they come, they may not understand the actual setup. Yes, they, they may not, so we did not engage them at that level.
Okay, so even though PNG Power turned up, they couldn't do anything? They can identify the problem, but they can't touch it? Until you get someone, a specialist to come in and attend? That's where you called, um, the contractor that was working with the team that installed those, those generators, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, we want you back. Now, um, advise the committee or inform the committee, why wouldn't PNG Power rectify that issue? They had to call you to come in?
Um, bas- basically, the system would work if, uh, everybody is familiar with that automatic transfer switch whereby there's a PNG Power supply and a standby generator supply and they switch on and off. The principle is the same, but not with four hundred and fifty volts. The switchboard down there is eleven thousand volts, so it's, it's high voltage. So PNG Power as the supplier authority will only come in and drop out the fuses or the power supply into the facility. And that's all they can do. So the facility belongs... So the facility belongs to the, to, I mean, the, yes, to PHA. So, um, uh, the responsibility and the upkeep of the C E P will be, yeah, with the hospital.
Now, um, Board Chairman, when the facility was ended over, did, did the, did the contractors bring in PNG Power? To look at the old setup of the new generators and the old ones plus the PNG Power lines coming in? Was there any arrangements in place?
Uh, sorry, Chairman, I can't answer that. Maybe Desmond, do you recall?
Okay, thank you Chairman, yes.
From my understanding, yes, there was PNG Power, they came in to do certification. They had to do certification to ensure that, um, power was put into the facility. So yes, I believe so, yes, PNG Power was on site.
So PNG Power was fully aware of the system that was installed? That's what you're saying?
Yes, that's correct.
They're fully aware? CEO, why can't PNG Power sort that issue out when they were on site that night? I want to understand that.
Um, PNG Power since, uh, as I've explained, PNG Power will, is the supplier authority and will only work up to the metering part of the facility. And after the meter, that belongs to the client and whoever contractors they engage, that's up to them. So PNG Power is only solely for generation, power generation into a facility. They don't do, they don't work on a facility.
Okay, so we are, we don't have a contractor? A permanent contractor who signed a contract with the hospital for power side? We don't have one?
Thank you Chair, uh, we don't have one currently and, and, and the reason, and, and the reason is simple, I've stated earlier. Because of the money situation, we couldn't do that, come into hospital to manage that we don't, we didn't have.
Alright, let's, that's, 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 I think we've established the, uh, the grounds or the, the basis of why we dragged on for twenty hours. I'll leave it to you guys to ask a few questions before we go on to something else.
So CEO and our contractor here, just, uh, before I come to, uh, O D G, is it? The company that was initially responsible for maintenance? Um, just going back to the twenty hour, did the power go off for a full twenty hours? Or the power was restored but because you had to fix the fault? So it took up the timeline or the timeframe of twenty hours?
Yeah, I believe the power was off for twenty hours. Within the twenty hours...
You went on the...
I was called on site, I think, before midday. I was called on site before mid, midday. I was probably on site by twelve, twelve PM. So I was there and we managed to get it online, I think, at four o'clock in the afternoon.
Five o'clock the...
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So I was there probably four hours.
Ah, yeah, so... So PNG Power came on, I mean, the main power came back after twenty hours while you were working on the, on the fault?
Um, negative. Um, after we, after we worked on it and we got, we got the, we actually got the hospital running on generator.
Okay.
Chair, if I may, uh, thank you.
Bro, uh, sorry, CEO, uh, the power was actually off for twenty hours?
You mean PNG Power? There was no power in Lay for twenty hours? Is that the case?
Uh, uh, Chair, I, I wouldn't, uh, I don't, I'm not in a position to answer that. But for the hospital, uh, yes, because we, we asked them to isolate the switch so that they can work, work, work within the, within the hospital. So they, the PNG Power to switch, switch the mains coming in off so the team could work on the generators. But as for blackout trade, uh, I'm not in a position to answer that. But the residents, we've been experiencing a lot of blackouts of recent times. Some has gone as far as thirty-six hours in the recent times, twenty-four hours and so forth, so... But for the hospital itself, I can understand that because we switched off the mains. I'm not in a position to say it was off for twenty hours. I could only say for the hospital, we were off for twenty hours.
If I may, during that time too, PNG Power did advertise that they're gonna have power outages in town. And they, and they put out notices from town.
And they, they did it proudly?
They always just put it out there and said there's gonna be no, no power over time during...
For how long?
There's, there's a notice, but it said that'd be rolling, rolling blackouts over time. And most of the time they don't stick to the schedule or just do whatever.
So I'm just trying to understand how, how it worked the full twenty hours. Probably power was restored, but because we had to work on the fault, that also added on to the extension of, of time. Uh, CEO, just coming back to O D G. O D G was the company that was contracted to do monthly maintenance? Or do you, do you have a service agreement?
That was the service agreements they had with the contract, uh, with the J I D when it was handed over to us. For the electrical was with O D G.
O D G?
O D G.
O D G.
Yeah, and Desmond was with them at the time, he was working in, and that's why he knew the, the systems quite well. It's a very complex system. And so when we took on board, we put this in our budget, that's why I was just kind of stretching the budget bit earlier on. We were just unable to maintain those service contracts. So we were pushed to the corner that, to have this kind of arrangement that we're having when it, and they get people come to try and fix it. So that's basically, uh, for, for, for us in management is basically a money issue for us to sustain the, the contract, service contractors.
Given, uh, latency, I mean, the experience of blackouts, obviously you'll want, uh, a contractor that will do maintenance and make sure that these, uh, generators are functioning. So that wouldn't be a priority, would you think?
It's a priority, Sir. It's a priority, Chair, but when you're competing with priorities, drug shortages, what do you do? Your finance coming, fifty percent of what you ask for, and you get the twenty percent of what you asked for. That poses as management, who do you present? So little money, if you look at drugs because you're thinking about patients or. These are the kind of realities that, you know, some of us now sitting hammered with day in, day out in terms of. But I get the question point. It's very clear, and I totally agree with you, that these big generators and others, definitely, that's the reason why the service contract were given to us. Unfortunately, we're just unable to sustain the service contract.
That boils down to our point of finance. And so, obviously, we don't know the kind of support that comes from the provincial government as well. Maybe provincial administrator, you can intervene.
Thank you. Since I was supported as the administrator for Morroby Provincial Administration and Provincial Government, since twenty-three up to now, we normally budgeted five million to support MBHA. Since twenty-three, twenty-four, and last year, we supported one point five mil. One point five million.
Every year?
Every year. That depends like what we normally do as U S politicians, you would know. What we normally do, we put our budget through a B E C. And then the B E C under the leadership of a German, in this case, the late horrible cabinet, they decide an appropriation and which has led us to be priorities. So that's what it is, yes. Yes, to answer your question, we do support.
Okay, so our friend. Desmond, Desmond, there's nothing wrong with those three generators. They're working perfectly fine. There are no mechanical, electrical issues with those generators. They're all brand new and they're working perfectly fine, right?
At the moment, the generators were working fine, yes.
Good. CEO, do we have a maintenance program for those three standby generators? Do we have somebody who maintains them? Do you have a schedule? Do you have somebody who's responsible for that?
Yes, again, it comes down to the point that I've mentioned earlier.
I know you have financial problems. I want to know.
Yes, yes, we do.
The committee wants to know if you have somebody and if you have a schedule. That's what I want to know.
Yes, we do. We handle in-house tasks as best to our capabilities. Those that require external support, we go out on a one-off basis. As mentioned earlier, since we do not have a contract in place, so whatever we cannot handle in-house, we source outside.
Now, do you have somebody? And do you have a schedule? Do you have a schedule to check the filters, the water, the oil level, whatever? Do you have a schedule?
Yes, for basic, yeah, for basic checks like that, yes, yes.
Good. Now, CEO, I heard something about some contract, some service contract or something. Do you have a contract now after this incident? What are you planning to do? You going to sign a contract with any contractor to continue to maintain standby for these issues?
It's a question, but yes, we do. The technical team, my cardigan, the team will recommend a contractor to us to see if we can get them on board. What we'll do now, Chair, is that if you're going to engage them now, I'm going to be using the project money to engage them. And I will get into a lot of trouble for that. You guys know that. But we have no choice, but if we do engage them, we'll be doing this for the next six months and while waiting for the budgets for next year to come out. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. You can resume your seat. Thank you very much, the two gentlemen. Now, as we understand, drugs are kept at certain places in hospitals during that twenty-hour Your storage facility for drugs, these specialized drugs that are meant to be in certain temperature, where were these drugs or where were they stored? Are they in the old facility? Are they in the new facility? What happened? If they were in the new facility and there was no power for twenty hours, what happened? Can you just advise, inform the committee about the drugs at that time?
Thank you, Chairman. With regard to drug storage, our current pharmacy is situated in the old wing. That's where the previous, the other gen set, so it was not affected by the new energy plant. So when PNG Power came back on, we still sustain power to the drug storage area.
We'll say you were very lucky that the dispensary or your pharmacy was not included in the plan for the new facility. That could have been a disaster. All your specialized medicine could have been gone to waste. It would cost hundreds of millions of kina. So we were very lucky that we had that facility in the old Angao infrastructure, so it was kept well and safe.
Under the old generator?
Yeah, yeah. Anything else to do with that? All right. CEO?
Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. If I may, just for the breaker. So we, the plan to restore the power back, our plan was obviously to procure the parts that was faulty and that would come from Australia, that would take at least up to four weeks lead time. They need to be assembled and brought in. So we managed to have a discussion with our friends from D F A D and they have, to their, the contractor that is on ground have procured that, and that should be coming in with some parts for the breaker. We went for a local solution, and I'm very thankful to the team here. We were able to salvage some parts that was in the old O D G warehouse that was now going off. So we managed to get that and with the technical knowledge of the system there, they had to pull out some quills from within the switchboard itself, and we managed to get the breaker up. As of, that was done on Thursday last week, Chairman, and we managed to get the breaker back up on Sunday afternoon. So for the whole two weeks, we were running on generators. And as I've said earlier, generators was costing us about three thousand liters per day. And that would equate to about three hundred and fifty-five thousand or so in a month in terms of the cost of running on generators alone. And so when it was hooked in on Sunday at five thirty P M, Chairman, the boys were on site, we asked them to observe until twelve in the night, that evening. We had seven blackouts within the space of five hours. So you had the switch, you just put in going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. So I told the boys we couldn't risk this. So we just switched off the PNG Power completely and we just continued to run on generators until we got assurance from PNG Power that there was stability of the currents coming in, then we can switch out to P P L. So we've been communicating with the P P L on ground to get that and prioritize Angao so that the powers, if any blackout, Angao must be a priority and continue to be a priority to have the power coming in from P P L to support us. So that was being done. And so within the, as I said, within the five hours, we had seven switchers. The blackout in lay is just crazy. And so, and just go back to the switchboard. The switchboard are meant to be replaced within five to ten years. We expect to have a switchers of about three hundred, there are about three fifty switchers before the board comes to its term. We've done three thousand, three thousand switchers. That means that's because of the frequent blackouts. Three thousand switchers in the space of two and a half years, three years since this thing was given to us. And so those are some of those technical challenges on credit. Thank you, Chair, I say no more.
Now, CEO, after that incident, did you make an attempt to bring PNG Power in and your maintenance team plus your Desmond in and sit down and try and iron out this so that you want to avoid this happening again? Did you do that?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, that was done at a technical level. The team met with the PNG Power and they discussed around that, Chair.
Okay, so now we can be rest assured that this similar incident, if it happens again, it will be rectified on the spot?
Yes.
Unless it's something else?
Unless something else, thank you.
Okay, that's good. Now, if there's nothing else, then we get on to the other matter. Committee members? Yeah, all right. Now let's get on to drugs. Let's get on to drugs. Now, CEO, how do you procure your drugs? Are you depending on the National Department of Health to procure your drugs? Or are you doing that yourself? Or is it fifty-fifty? They're giving you some and you purchasing some? Just inform the committee, please.
Chairman, as you all know, the committee and the procurement, the sole procurement of all the drugs coming to the country and in all the public facilities is done by the Department of Health. And the budget appropriation is given to them. We are not given budget appropriations for paying for drugs. We usually use it because use our operations money when we have shortfalls. And that's basically the kind of arrangement we have. And we've been on record, I think we've been spending close to about two million, thereabouts, for hospital drugs. And our estimation is that, and then the public health, we've been spending up to about one point five, two million as well within the space of, in the public health. But that's inclusive of the D D A is also spending independently, but we're getting the numbers and putting it as ours because they're spending it on the drugs. So last year alone, the D D A spent about two point, two, three million kina, two million.
For their own?
For their own drugs.
Districts?
For their own district to support this continuous drug shortages that we are facing countrywide. And from the Angao space, we usually sometimes the little money that we generate from the patient fees that we collect, that also goes to support drugs and some of the operational that we do within the hospitals. I'll stop here. Maybe Dr. James want to say something on drugs and also say something that the chairman can make his comment. So with the drugs, medical drugs and consumables, in August twenty twenty-three, along with P M G H's, health department asserted to an arrangement where they will do partial direct shipment to Angao and P M G H's. That, to some extent, assisted a bit, but the challenge was much of what was requested was not provided in quantity and on a timely manner. So that continued on for us as a challenge to maintain stock supply. From stats, last year, we had general attendance in twenty twenty-four, hundred and sixty-seven thousand people coming seeking services and the number of prescriptions.
Dr. Sorry, can I ask a quick question? Also bringing in the chairman as well, this four hundred million includes the drugs as well? The four hundred million budget?
It includes the drug gaps, not to get a full responsibility of the Department of Health, but from our historical records, as pay has finished, we try to make some projects and so. Yes, so we're projecting our six million, three million for Angao, three million for the public health space. Yeah, so once the direct shipment comes in, I mean, I was getting to the stats. So we have a total in twenty twenty-four, about hundred and sixty-seven thousand attendance. Coming in for prescriptions alone was around eighty, ninety thousand seeking. So what we could offer mismatches what's being requested for. So that's why a lot of them tend up and then has to go and find other options of getting what they need.
CEO and the director, I think Chairman, you've been there quite long, eleven years on the job. Just inform the committee, going back, how long now did we have this issue of drug shortages?
Chairman, I can say it's been going on ever since my involvement with Angao.
Eleven years ago?
Plus. And there's been different suppliers. I mean, it all goes through the central A M S system.
Yeah.
All right. Whether, as Dr. James said, some of it in twenty twenty-three decided to go direct shipments to Angao and Palm Gen. But the districts still have to, district health managers still fill out their forms, they give them to the A M S for delivery. It may or may not be the right amounts, the right drugs show up accordingly. Honorable Health Minister outlined, it was last week, that there's a new system being put in place where all the provinces would be, all the PHAs would be responsible for drugs, and we're getting prepared for that system now. So we know exactly what we need. We don't have to worry about sending an order to somebody and they give us the wrong stuff, not enough of the right stuff. You know, this is a system, and we're hanging our hopes that that system's going to work. But in the meantime, we, you know, we rely upon, we've got service level agreements with five to ten districts to assist in their own districts. They're well aware of the issues. We meet regularly with the leaders of Morroby. They know the issues and, you know, it's just, it isn't one of these ongoing problems for P N G, supply of drugs. And as the CEO said, you know, where we can, we go out and buy drugs, you know, with the money that we don't have. We'll pull it from somewhere else and go purchase locally.
CEO, just for the sake of this inquiry, just give us, from your requirements annually, what percentage do you get, drugs alone?
Chair, I cannot pull that information out, but we can.
Do you have it somewhere in your reports?
We will look through and we will give that information.
Just like you did for the finances? You request this much and you're only getting certain percentage of it? I want to know about the drugs as well.
Sure, we will look at that and provide it, thank you.
Now, currently in your facility, what drugs are you running out of? Which ones are you running out of? T B drugs, we got, now we have polio and malaria and what drugs are right now in the red?
Thank you. Currently, we have a, there's a catalog, there's a catalog items of vital, essential, non-essential drugs. Most of the vital drugs, we try to maintain. Essentials, non-essentials, based on the need, we try to. But I think we've got a huge list of nil-stock items, which I have a list which I can also make it available.
Thank you very much. We would be more than happy to receive that list of drugs that you're running out of. Members, committee members, any questions on drugs?
Yes, Chairman, just a question on the A M S. What's the status of that in Morroby?
Well, the status is there. I mean, they had a fire last, last year they had a fire, the building burnt down, rebuilt, they reopened again. But again, it's just, there's regional warehouses, I think the one here supplies. No, there was a fire here, one next to the snack bar. So they've reopened again, but it's just, it's a system that's managed by M N D O H, and there's a few regional warehouses. Way is probably the biggest next to Port Moresby. And as I said, we go directly to A M S in Moresby, all right, the system in Moresby. The ten districts in Morroby, they have the district health managers, they put their orders through the A M S here, and then it's delivered. So the new system will involve a, you know, more of a provincial pharmacy system where the PHA can have more direct control over stock. And we can say, we can monitor, say, if Belolo short us something and Finch has got, Finch Allen's got something else more, we can move from Finch, we can move to Belolo. It's easier for us to move things internally. Right now, we have zero control unless we go out and purchase the drugs ourselves. Unless we go out and purchase the drugs ourselves.
Yeah, I think, thank you. May I just add, thank you, Chairman. I think uh, one of the things that we faced in Moro Bay is that unlike other provinces, perhaps maybe Millim Bay and others, they have a provincial drug store. In Moro Bay, we don't have a provincial drug store. And so what it, what it means is that all our district facilities get it straight from the area medical store. So which means that the area medical store is not under our jurisdiction. The 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 community need to understand. They represent to the Department of Health, they are not my employee of the PHA. They are the employee of the Department of Health, and so they look after the stocks that comes in. So in Moro Bay's case, our, because of that, our, our districts order directly to the AMS. So they pick it up there. So that's some work that we are doing, we put some plans for this work uh, to PIP and waiting for for support to actually build a uh, provincial uh, drug storehouse for Moro Bay PHA. So that will help us in terms of having visibility when it comes to area medical store. We bring everything into our points, so we can organize within ourselves to uh, distribute. Uh, having stated that, Chair, we also during this redevelopment phase of the hospital, there's going to be just recently done up a uh, two warehouses for drug store for Angao, which will be opening, I think, anytime this month. And so hopefully, that should also ease in terms of the spaces of uh, the direct shipments that are coming in directly to uh, Angao Hospital at this point in time. Thank you. I stop here.
We, we, this, this committee will uh, most then get in touch with the Health Minister and ensure that whatever that he's made a commitment is, is, is installed or, you know, taken care of. So this issue with, you know, drugs can be, you know, controlled, but it has been going on for quite a long time.
Now, Chairman, uh, we hear the new area medical store, the new area medical store is being built. Uh, can you inform the committee if that is true and if the building is going up? And if there's money allocated for it, and if there's a contractor on site? We would like to know, please.
Um, that's the responsibility of MNDOH, nothing to do with the PHA.
Okay. Uh, you live around here, you should see some, something to advise the committee.
Yeah, but it's legally not.
To your knowledge, CEO? What's happening? Is there a new store, medical store going up?
The, not the last time I checked, I drive past, I haven't decided uh, any new infrastructures going up in that the bent-on uh, area.
So where are all your drugs kept?
Currently now, the, they, the bend-on, they, the health department is renting a warehouse.
The department is renting a warehouse?
Uh, just close to where the bent-on facilities for us to stock drugs and get the drugs out. Thank you, Chair.
All right, okay. Finally, I would like to touch. Oh, yes.
Sir, CEO, just uh, because we are still on drugs, I just uh, with regards to the logistics companies and your displacement of drugs to the rural, uh, you know, communities, either the district or at the headquarters level, how, how are you managing this? How is, how are people receiving the drugs effectively?
So, uh, thank you. In terms of the logistics from uh, dispensing logistics from, sorry, from the area medical store to the districts, uh, currently the practice now is that our districts themselves come and picked up the drugs and then they go back to their facilities and they dis- that's the current practice we are doing, but uh, the bit from logistics to get it from the area medical, so this, that's not within our jurisdiction, so I'm not gonna comment on that, but the bit that I know of is our districts to come and, or we, and they get their supplies and go back.
Yeah, CEO, in a, in a perfect world, uh, how do you envisage this, this situation of uh, drugs? Plus, you know, the more of the help? Is, is uh, area medical impediment or what, what's, what, what would be an ideal situation?
In, in the ideal situation, I, I would say my bit, maybe Dr. James can add on at the Chairman. Um, one side of the, one side of the argument is that one, we, people may argue that, you know, we're not getting enough fund for the drugs to come in. That's probably the biggest one side of the argument.
Yeah, no.
On the other side of the argument would be that uh, our consumption rate, some of the drugs we are getting, we are not using and it's been wasted. So it's, it's the, it's the issue of where do you find this balance? And so I think, as the system that we use and the, the current system that we use, in my understanding is that it's more to do with issuance of uh, the drugs rather than the actual consumption rates of of the drugs being used. And there's a big work that needs to be done by, you know, all, all our technical team, not only us in the PHA, but nationwide to actually establish that uh, properly, so we know exactly our, our consumption rates, meaning that this extra number of amoxicillin should be consumed yeah, in a year, you know, that kind of thing. So that, in my view, that is, that is the, that's one of the big work that still needs to be established. Because a lot of our projections are based on uh, assumption, but then the system that we are currently using, you still find that there's still some wastages of some things that we are getting that we are not actually using. Dr. James, do you want to add something on it?
Maybe, CEO, maybe we, we need, as a country and as a, N-D-O-H, we, we should get a a system that identifies, you know, data correlation and then you, you work it out, okay, this is an X amount, X amount, so there, there's no wastage.
Thank you, Chair. I think currently with the medical supplies from the Health Department, we've got a system called the HEM Supply. Uh, that's the system which deals with the inventory and then recommendations for uh, stockouts to be procured. Uh, one of the biggest challenges seeing like if we take on board the responsibility of procuring and distributing medical supplies, compliance perspective of ensuring safety in terms of consumption and all that needs to be clear so that patients are getting a safe drug. That is something which, if it's centralized, it will coordinate well. But in terms of distribution, that's something probably from uh, from a personal point of view, probably within the PHA itself knows their territories and they can be able to distribute if given that opportunity and support to, a resource allocation to support distribution. Thank you.
Thank you, the Director. Now, CEO, I know, I understand that every year, once or twice, all you CEOs, PHA CEOs go down to Port Moresby and sit down and discuss these issues. You've been in the position for what, three years now? Four years? So I know you guys have been talking about shortage of drugs, funding issues. What's the feedback you get from the department?
Uh, we normally get assurance that they will look into the situation.
Look into?
Yes. So I have no further comment to add on top of that statement. Thank you.
Chairman? Let me just, just, just add on that too. I mean, typically what happens towards the end of the year as well. And you as, as members of Parliament, and you understand this too. We'll, we'll get a check. Get turned towards the end of the year. There's a little bit of money left over in the system somewhere, so the Minister will go around and hand out checks.
It, it also happens to us, so.
Yeah, it happens to everybody. But it's just, it's a, it's, it's the ad hoc nature of this arrangement. We can't plan for these things. It's like we can't, it's like when we try to formalize things with the the district development authorities as well. So, okay, fine, here's the situation for, for Markham District. You know, here's where we need your assistance, and so we enter into these service level agreements with, with the DDAs. And, you know, sort of, so we can get some more, I guess, certainty in the system? So if we're able to keep people in the districts, they don't end up in Angao taxing the system.
Hmm.
Then it doesn't stop people coming down the Highlands Highway from, in the up here. But it's just, it's just about this regular, you know, it's inconsistent supply of drugs, inconsistent supply of budget. But we consistently have patients more and more. So something, something's gotta match up somewhere along the way. That's, we, you know, everybody needs to take a good hard look at how we operate in the country.
Well, for your information, uh, there were a lot of inquiries done into how the drugs were procured and distributed within the country by another parliamentary committee called the Public Accounts Committee, and there are recommendations, very good recommendations there. Some of these recommendations are being implemented, uh, most of them are not yet. Uh, one of the most important ones about drugs issue is to decentralize. Give the budgetary allocation to the PHAs and they manage their own supply throughout the year. And that is one important uh, recommendation by PAC uh, that's not implemented as yet. So that is something that you CEOs of PHAs must push at your level. Every time you go down to Port Moresby to meet and discuss your budgetary issues, this is something that you need to push at your level, that you want decentralization of procurement and distribution of drugs to be done by your PHAs. Because nothing to do with health, so you don't have to wait around for them. So we understand, you know, money is the root cause of all these issues, that we understand. Uh, so there are some things that are good, but they're not happening. So, yeah. And now, finally, uh, I'd like to touch on the cancer facility. Uh, you don't have to go into detail. All I want to know is, we all know that Angao's got a cancer facility. It's operating. Mothers can come here and get treated for cancer and all that. I want to know, or the committee wants to know, if this facility is operating one hundred percent? Is it operating at fifty percent? Or whatever percent? Please inform the committee.
Thank you, Chair. I think since we opened the facility, the statistics, my Director can later uh, come online. So when we opened the facility, um, to operate a radiation uh, treatment facility, uh, you need to have a specialist personnel on ground. So we have two expedites that are currently uh, initially was engaged at the Kumul Petroleum. And then we've tried to get them on board uh, under our uh, two DPM processes and the, the work is still pending. So that's a radiation oncologist and a medical physicist. So we have those two expedites on ground and we have national doctors also working under them, so that slowly uh, train and we transfer the skill sets. Uh, since our opening, the, basically now is that the number of people coming now, as Dr. stated earlier, is is, is, it's about the workforce versus the demand of as a service that is coming. So when we have created a demand for service because no one else is uh, doing this anywhere in the country. And so the new cancer facility, Chair, is that, there are two components to the radiation facility that we have. One is the external beam, which we opened in uh, August last, last year, yes. August last year, and there's the other one called um, brachytherapy, that's for the internal one, internal beams. We opened uh, in February this year. So the internal beam is basically to treat cases like cervical cancers that you can actually put a source right next to the, and treat. And just to give a background, uh, so if you are gonna ask me a direct question as to the percentage wise, probably because of the, not the, the skill sets that we have, but because of the load that is coming. That's basically where will be our challenges in terms of HR to have one or two more of the, uh, the, the specialists that we have. We had, we've got a national doctor who has gone to Zambia and come back, trained under radiation oncology, who's also now based in Angao. Is also working with the current experts to also transfer skills there. So we can locally, in the next two or three years, we can locally run the whole cancer facility ourselves within the country. So that is where our challenge. I will leave to other, that, that our statistics, I'll leave to and Dr. James, you can probably make some comments on that. Thanks.
Thank you. I think since August last year, when we opened the facility, we've uh, had about more than one thousand two hundred forty uh, cancer patients coming and getting treatment. Uh, that's the external beam. For brachytherapy, which is specific for cervical cancer, we've had uh, more than three hundred eighty so far that have come forward to get the treatment. We also offer chemotherapy services. So likewise, we've also today offered chemotherapy for more than about three hundred already. So that's, that's in terms of.
So that would guide me, this is uh, not just Moro Bay patients, this is everyone, and thereby causing more stress on your own?
E-exactly. So just, just for a fair bit of understanding, for cancer treatment, it's not like just giving the treatment and then they go away. It's a series of phases. Cycles that each cancer patient goes through. They go through six or seven cycles. Uh, the challenging, challenge that we have faced after this service is the temporary stay of patients coming from outside. That is, that is the challenge that we are facing. So these patients don't require full admission to award because they just come in, get treatment and then go. So those that are referred from outside, the provinces have a big challenge on this. So we, as uh, management, we've tried to engage with partners, try to see our best we can get support so that we can provide a, a facility for them to access.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so what you're telling the committee is that the equipment, the clinic is hundred percent functional, right?
Yes.
It's, it's operational, hundred percent?
It's operational, hundred percent.
You, your issues are, you have a long waitlist because you're down with manpower, right?
Yes, there's, there's two.
Specialist doctors, yes.
There's two or three uh, components to it. One, manpower is one thing. The other bit, we also need to upgrade because we, we, we know that Cobalt sixty is not the top of the range uh, treatment service for cancer. We would like to go further by installing Linux bunker so that we reach that top range of treatment. However, currently what's happening, uh, most of the planning is done on a two-dimensional basis. That means we have a very old simulator. Simulator is a, a planning equipment. We plan our best we can effectively treat that cancer.
Yes.
It's a very old and it's no longer working. So we, we've been socializing with partners to see if we can install a new one which is running at the cost of about eight million kina to install a city simulator. So that will further enhance how we can best offer uh, the cancer treatment services.
So you, you, you are informing the committee that the system, the current system now is not that good. You want something more advanced?
Uh, well, I'll, I'll probably go back in, in history. We, we had the Cancer Service Society at Angao some time back. But because of some regulatory issues, we no longer provided that.
That's right.
The current uh, management, seeing the need for that service, we decided to plan to at least offer something whilst we plan on an upgrade to meet the current standard of treatment. So that is, that's what exactly happened. At least we revived the previous cancer treatment that was on the ground. We revived it, get it back up and running whilst we look at further strengthening and improving that service.
You have a system already, which, which system do you want to revive?
Yeah, let.
I'll, I'll step in. This was the, the old system, this was the, the um, Cobalt sixty.
Cobalt sixty, yes.
So that was the one that, you know, late Doc, Dr. Niblet operated back in, you know, two thousand fifteen, sixteen. That one, we couldn't, the, basically the radiation source decayed, decayed. We were not able to get a new radiation source until PNG jumped through all the hurdles of regulatory with the International Atomic Energy Association. So that took eight years to do. So our, our plan was always to get the old services up and running. All right, just as Dr. James said, so there was something in place that we could treat people. We went out, we partnered with Kumul Petroleum. All right, they, they provided about twenty million worth of equipment, worth of upgrades, paid for staff as well. And the return on that investment has been about, you know, six and a half times return on investment. We figure every person who tries to go overseas for treatments, about a hundred thousand kina. So we've treated, you know, a hundred, you know, a lot of people. And it's, it's saved the country a lot of money.
But, but you still want something better?
We want something better. So similar to what's going into Port Moresby General Hospital right now, there's a literal accelerators that are going into Pongjen. All right. We've, we have a plan in place that we're socializing with Kumul Petroleum, with uh, MNDOH and others to say, okay, it's about what, a hundred million, roughly a hundred million? and others, and say, okay, it's about, what, 100 million, roughly 100 million kina, to build around the existing facility, you can see that when you come...
So that'll complete those, all, the old cancer facility?
It'll bring it up to current day technology. Right now, we're using old technology, but it works.
But you have issues of accommodating patients coming from centers, outside centers, right?
Yes.
You don't have space to accommodate them?
No, no.
And you have issues of specialist cancer doctors?
Yes, at the, at the moment, we've got one who went trained at Zambia, is on the ground, Hunter and the others assisting us. Currently, we've got radiation therapists who are coming out of Unitech, and, and currently they're assisting us. We still need to get them captured into our establishment, so that we can increase capacity of our workforce to fully and, you know, holistically treat cancer patients.
All right. So you want the state-of-the-art latest to complement the entire operation of the cancer clinic? You need specialist doctors, more specialist doctors, and you need space in, within the premises to accommodate people coming from outside. So those are your constraints to the cancer. So we should say that it's operating at 80%, 70% capacity?
Yes, I think we should, we can say 80, 85%.
Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, sorry, thank you for giving me time. I think one of the biggest pressing issues now for the cancer is our radiation therapist. So currently now, we are, they're on STCs, short-term contracts, and we are paying them off on our operations money to keep them employed. We don't have them in our current establishment, the 500, we don't have, those positions are not there.
They're like contract officers.
They are, we just engage them as short-term contract officers now, so that's the work that we are still bouncing off after our, after our 517 recruitment is completed, there's 65 positions that's gonna be withdrawn. We'll have to look at that, whether we need them or not, and try to reclassify and get some of these people onto these DPM processes. So the biggest one for us also is this, this HR thing. The patients that are coming down, are coming for treatment, a lot of them are walking, talking patients, and so they don't have to be admitted to the ward. And so with that, and that there lies the issue of if they have one talks, where do they stay? So these are some of the social challenges that come, because my patient coming has to stay for minimum of six weeks in lay, six, seven weeks, because he or she needs to come every week for a cycle, treatment cycle, so, and, and those are some of the challenges we have. Chair, just quickly, the old Cobalt 60 that we brought in, it was a compliance issue rather than our ability to afford bringing it in. So the compliance, we had to meet IA requirements, and that took a very long time from the Act of Parliament regulations, eventually the implementation from our side.
That's right.
So that, that took, took us a while, and we were able to pull this one off thankfully, and then the source came in. The new brachytherapy is, we moved away from the cesium source to a Cobalt 60 source, so it's, the new one is pretty much up there with, with the other others in the world. Is that the old one, the external one, that needs to be, so the one that motivates, so the radiation source that is in there is Cobalt 60, so it opens up and releases it and treats the, and closes. So we are trying to move away from this Cobalt 60 to an external beam, what do you call it, Linek. So Linek is basically high-velocity X-ray beams, but the treatment is more, you know, the outcomes are much better than these ones, the Cobalt 60. And the rationale why we did this was basically, we had to get some services going, we are getting some good outcomes, our mothers with some cervical cancers, we are reversing stage three cervical cancers as well. So we are getting some good, good, good outcomes. Tomorrow, if you have the opportunity to visit the facility, you can talk to the clinical staff themselves, and you can hear from the, from themselves. But I'll stop here, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions from the two of you?
Just one, sorry, CEO. So just on some questions on the governance and accountability aspects. You mentioned about the districts going direct to procure their drugs. Do you have oversight, do they have to come to you for clearance, or are our officers well-versed to procure drugs directly?
I will mention some, maybe Chairman can come in, but I think for the districts, in terms of the safety of drugs, at the moment, it's not an issue, because they're procuring from recognized suppliers that are already in-country, which means that they're picking it from the local pharmacies, like City Pharmacy and others, so that, that bit, but in terms of visibility, you know, that's the thing, you know, DDA is an entity on its own, and this messaging, this, sometimes it's quite difficult from where we are seated to message out the, the politics and the, it's, 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 so we've managed to sign, we were the first province to come up with the idea of the service level agreement, some others have signed, but that was our, our thought here, but we, we pushed it, we were able to sign about five so far, five, five out of 10. We're still socializing today, that will, that will, that will clearly articulate what the, we've got a copy of the service level agreement with us, we'll, we'll share it with you, clearly articulate what the roles of the DDA is, and what the roles of the pages is in terms of health service delivery in their districts. And we have gone further to develop one pages for our districts, so our MPs can have a look at it, they know where they should be spending their money, how many staff do we have, how many facilities closed, what's your leading course of debt in your district. So we have all this information, and that's the one that we tried to socialize, but I'm yet to sign five more of my districts, and that's the challenge we have. So we're looking at techniques, how we're gonna do this, and we've come up with one or two we haven't tried out yet, so. But basically, in terms of the overall vision, like, because they're procuring it themselves, I don't have that total visibility, so in the SLA, we try to tie them down with this, this kind of, so we, we coordinate it a bit better, and so we can, what they are buying is what we actually need, and not buying because somebody told them that they run it by us, because we are the custodians of health, as far as authorities consent, so we will tell them, oh, if they're gonna build a facility, a level-one facility or level-two facility, at least they run it by us, because we are the custodians of the standards. How you build it, you give to who a contractor is, not my problem, but so long as there's some processes in place. So we believe in our hearts that SLA is the way to go, it's a service level agreement, to have that mutual understanding, because we are both two authorities established by Act of Parliament. And so resources are going separately, I cannot question how you spend your money, you cannot question how I spend it, because I'm an, I'm an entity on my own as far as extra consent. But as a SLA, that's the way we find a link and common ground, in which we can share resources to serve our peoples.
I came across a report on equipment in Bulolo that, you know, wealth class that cannot be used, so I think that's, yeah...
I can give a quick feedback, Chair, if you may. So Bulolo, like Angar and everybody else, the equipments came in, it's a HR, as I've said, in Bulolo. The current structure we have for Bulolo is for a level-three facility of 38 staff. The level four facility would need 50 to 60 staff to actually operate the level facility. When this planning were done, and then the infrastructure was built, HR was, you know, perhaps was overlooked, I don't know, but that was not in this part of work. So when we opened the facility, now we are looking for people to come and fill it, when we don't have those positions in our current establishment, and so that's the challenge, so we're trying to, but for us, thankfully, we've got about three role doctor positions outside. We managed in this current recruitment, we had managed to get three of them filled, we are waiting for DPMs, so hopefully, if that goes well, we should get a doctor up to, push him up to, or him here to Bulolo. We've got one in Muzing that we've already, and one for Lay to manage our urban clinics. If we have time, we can also have a look at those clinics tomorrow.
Yes. Chairman, just my final question to Chairman. Chairman, you've been on the roll for some years, how do you see the Act, the Provincial Health Act? Do you think we should do more in terms of empowering the board and reviewing some of these things?
Thank, thank you, member. Yes, I think the PHAs need more empowerment. Amongst some of the roadblocks, and we talked about decentralization before, one of the things that is a major roadblock for us, as Dr. Bing mentioned, is the HR side. So there was talk about giving the authorities, the PHAs, full recruitment authority. I mean, sure, we have a ceiling, we have an agreed-upon structure, but let us go and recruit for those positions. We don't have to go through this long, lengthy process, which has taken us years and years and years to do. I mean, that's one thing, the, the drug thing, which is, it's in the process, that, that's okay. But if, if we're gonna be, you know, have, have an authority, let us be a full authority. Sure, there can be oversight, sure, but, but like, let us get on with the job.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're not gonna make these improvements that we all know we need to make, and we can make. So to me, it's just, I mean, give some more powers to the PHAs.
Yeah. So you think PHA is, is the way forward?
Oh, I think so, because, I mean, we, we're the, you know, we're the local people on the ground. We, we know what our districts require, we know what lay requires, we, you know, we know. We, most of our staff are from here. I mean, we know what we need to do, we know what medicine we need where, you know, and that's what we ask for, and somebody sends us the wrong stuff. So if we have more, you know, more authority over those types of matters, let us run, hold us accountable, share, that's fine, but let us, you know, remove, remove the handcuffs and let us do our job. Otherwise, there's no point in having an authority. So we've got all the responsibility, but no authority to carry out the responsibilities.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, just from, I'm a, I'm a new member of parliament, I'm, I'm from the private sector, so in my opinion, you either have full authority or don't have it at all. So that's a challenge I give to the Prime Minister and also to the Health Department. Get rid, get rid of the PHA, or give them full authority, you know, to decentralize, one or the other, don't, don't give them, and then, you know, so that, that's, therein lies our...
Thank you, Chairman, that concludes my questioning.
Thank you, honorable member, members. I would like to take this opportunity to ask any board members, PHA board, to add on something, if you think your board missed, or the CEO missed, and you think it's important for the committee to...
To take up.
To take note of, this is an opportunity for you to make your contributions, any of the board members, if there are any in the audience.
At the back here.
I want to say something. My name is Millie, and I...
Yeah, come to the mic. Yes, to the microphone, you're recorded, so you'll be recorded, so...
Can I do so?
Yes.
Thank you, honorable members, for your time to come to Lay in Morroby Province to ask us and drill us on what is good and what is bad, and everything in between. I would like to say that it's important that you, the national government, decide to give all the provinces health authority, you need to give them that with full backing in terms of finance, and not give it to us in dribs and drabs, because health services cost money, and especially the 10 provinces in Morro, or the 10 districts in Morroby Province, some of them don't have access to road. So either you fly things to them, or go by boat. And it's very difficult to run a province that has 10 districts and to deliver health services to our people. And I think we've gone through the lot from our chairman and our management, so all we want is for you to give us full autonomy of how to run Morroby PHA. And also, at the same time, make sure that the decisions that are made in parliament is for the people. It's not about you guys, it's not about us, but what we can do to serve our people. I think that's what I'd like to say. And at the same time, you guys asked a question in terms of the hospital facilities, how it came about to having to redevelop Angar Hospital. Now, I don't know if you guys can remember that there was discussions that the Australian government would put in $250 million, and for us to counter that by our national government putting in 250,000, 250 million kina, pardon me, and that was never the case. So us, as a government, whether it's the national government or us in the provincial government, we need to work together. At bottom line, we are supposed to give services to our people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Yes.
So your, your...
Yes, go ahead.
What's the word? Your complaint is, your complaint is, is for, do we review the PHA Act, or what, you know, in, you know, we, we need to arrive at a, at an ideal situation in terms of all the, so we, we also need to identify where, where you would compel us to, you know...
Okay.
Take all these issues up and, and try and make change.
Honorable member?
Your question is correct, but we need to work together as a team, whether you're in the national government or, or us at the provincial level. When it comes down to health services, I want the health services to go to the person at the ward.
Where is the failure on the part of you saying working together? Where is the failure on our part as a government?
Well, I can see that the amount of money that we budget every year doesn't come down the way it is estimated and budgeted for. You, you hold on to it and you give us dribs and drabs. What are we gonna do with that?
I know.
I'm sorry, Honorable Morris.
Thank you, Madam, for your concerns, your concerns are noted.
Yes, sir.
And thank you for presenting yourself before the committee. Any other committee members with any comments?
Thank you.
Any issues you want to raise, for any, any, any medical doctors in the audience where you feel there's something that needs to be brought to the attention of the committee, you may come forward.
So we can take it up.
If there is not much, any members of the public would like to make a comment?
Yeah.
Okay, board member?
Zoe Harrison from the board member. I would just like to raise it as a result of power issues and time maintenance, that we do get damage to some equipment, like the sterilizing unit, and that is preventing operations from occurring at the moment. That with the extraordinary expenditure, we need greater assistance and expediting the allocation of those funds. So that comes back to the amendment of the Act to allow us greater control over those special project funds, to be able, for us to manage as these arise, and not have to go through further delays in seeking approval to use that, especially for very critical equipment like the sterilizer.
We have an act that does... That is something very important that you raised, I missed that, and I would like to ask the CEO now, that a board member has raised this issue. What happens when someone's under the knife and there's a blackout? What goes on? It's just like, you know, all the equipment is working, and suddenly, there's a blackout, and everything goes off in the operating theater? So can you take us through this? What happens? It came to my mind, because she mentioned the power blackouts are causing a lot of equipment to...
To malfunction.
Yeah. So it's a case where, you know, it's very important to know.
Thank you, Chairman. So probably I'll answer that in two case scenarios. Firstly, coming back to the contract agreements, some of those equipments that are installed in the hospitals, theater, sterilizing unit, all those highly technical. So you need technical people to ensure that they continuously run satisfactorily, so that we can meet the demands that are at hand. When we have such things... that are at hand. When we have such things like, you know, continuous recurrent power outages, it ends up spoiling our equipments. When we don't have those regular services and contingency plans to maintain the operations of those equipment, it becomes a big challenge. The other bit is, let us go into the operating room where we have a patient that is dead. It's all power dependent. Much of what we have now is to have a safe backup. So when the patient is under the knife, we cannot afford to have no power at all for more than three minutes. We must have consistent power backups so that there is adequate light and we maintain and complete the surgery. So it depends on the kind of cases we also do. There are some cases which do not entirely depend, depend on support, life support and such. You can get that done if power goes off, you can use other sources of light so that you complete the procedure. But what we do is we communicate, if we see that there is recurrent power blackout, we communicate with our team and then we get assurance that if power will be maintained, then we get to book our big cases. If we continue to have power ups and downs, we don't tend to book a lot of our big cases because we might end up in a scenario where patients open and the power goes off and we can't continue the surgery. So that's the kind of...
Okay, thank you very much for that. How about you communicating to your doctors to run your generators when you're doing a delicate operation? Have you done that?
Yes, we do, we do communicate. When seeing that we have big cases to do, we communicate that down to our facilities team and say, look, we've got these big cases to do. If we're having power disruptions, why not you maintain gen set so we can comfortably complete our surgery? So we do have communications.
That's a management issue for you as a manager of all the operations of the hospital. Thank you very much. All this, the new facility that we have now, given to us as a gift by the Australian people, so far, with all these power fluctuations, all this equipment, all this state-of-the-art equipment, are they all operating well? Or some of this equipment are gone now?
As raised, the steriliser is a current issue.
The steriliser is gone?
The steriliser is gone.
It's in your report. Anything else that has gone bad because of power fluctuations?
The new facility had two-room x-rays, the OPG and the analogue x-rays. That went off, we only survived one. With sterilisers down. Yeah, so I think those are the big ones that are down because of the powers.
During the course of the construction, were there any thought put into a system where we protect this delicate equipment? Is there a system in place to protect this equipment? Very expensive and top-of-the-range equipment.
I think after several of these instances, we have come to realise that the backup support for much of these equipments were not fully in place. So we are trying to work around to see our best, we can ensure that that is in place and then we can safeguard our equipment. So that's some of the discussions we've been having so that we can have backups to safeguard most of our important equipments.
All right. So we probably missed that during the planning of the entire facility, that we did not think of that side of things to, yeah, there's a backup system like UPS and all that to put in place to protect all this really brand-new equipment, yeah, delicate equipment. So that's something ongoing for your management, CEO, to fine-tune that. Okay, if there's nothing else from the public, from the board members, are you done? Or is there something else you want to...
One more, one more.
Yes, sorry?
Sorry, we would like to have a hospital management system, electronic system in place because that would aid our efficiency, allow us to plan. So we can see if the, you know, do analysis on data, the trends, drug users like you spoke of, length of stay for planning for patients, better manage the data record keeping, have greater accessibility for the preventative maintenance data. So we know the outages, we can plan ahead, we know the hours that things are run for, and it would be centralised and available. But it's hard to get funding for these things because everybody loves the drugs, loves the docs, the medicine, but they're not looking at the infrastructure, the electronic infrastructure that we need to be able to more effectively manage.
Yeah. Part of the problem I identified in this hearing, apart from the finances, is an excellent software system. So would you know of one?
And link through to asset management so we can monitor the depreciation so we can also pay for reordering.
Yeah. So would you know of one that we can, you can give us a recommendation so we can take it up?
There's ones out of the Nazarene Hospital, which seems to be the best one so far. But something that's, that I've raised a number of times when we've had chair meetings with the, with the Health Minister, can we find one system for the country?
Oh, we should.
As opposed to everybody trying to do their own?
We should.
You know, let's get one so it's all centrally, you know, linked together, we have one big database across the country. So some of these things, the decentralisation is a good thing. But because you don't need twenty-two PHAs out running around trying to find their own software.
We shouldn't be doing that.
No, it's just a waste of money.
Find one for best practice and adopt it.
And it will provide that transparency as well because you can just log in and you can see it. It will streamline all the reporting. And then we're dealing with facts and not emotions for some of that decision-making.
Yeah. Thank you, madam. With regard to that, in my interactions with certain medical professionals in and around Port Mosby, Paradise Hospital is, in fact, they have the system in place. All the patients are recorded electronically, the medical history, everything is there. So they, they have a local who went down to Australia somewhere and did some studies and then implemented this program. So Dr Chalau from here before, he is now in charge. So they are electronically operating the system now. So that's, that's something I know that they're doing now. And they're trying to get this across to the Health Department to ask if Health Department can look into it and explain it right as well. Yeah. So thank you very much for your contributions, madam. And if we don't have any more comments or contributions from the public, from the health professionals, from Angar, then it's twenty past four. Yes, CEO? Chair, sorry, thank you. Your final remarks? Yes. We're not done with you yet, by the way. If we need any more information, we will always call upon you. We'll see you tomorrow. No worries, all good. You can do your final remarks. Thank you, thank you. I think much has been said today. I appreciate the discussions that we had today. It's about system strengthening and moving forward. I just want to flag up to the attention of the committee about our eight posts across the country and especially for Morroby in particular. Morroby has a total of about 419 facilities. Of that, we've got about 364, eight posts of those facilities, including Angar Hospital and all the districts. And so current data shows to us that we've got about forty-eight percent of the eight posts closed, which amount about 176. And the eight posts, the reason, most of the eight posts are closed as a result of, you know, infrastructure not being revived for so many donkey years. And that's considered about seventy percent of the reason why that that's the case. Thirty or forty percent of the reason is because of the HR issues, which we are trying to address through this. So bringing back to this standard thing, I just want to flag this before we wind down. If you do the health standards, the standards for a level one facility, the cost of a level one facility is anything between, I think Hela did some and they were setting some numbers, anything with 200,000 to 300,000,000, depending on the, depending on where the facility is.
Yeah, the location.
Yeah. And so the challenge that we will face, the PHAs and PEPs, the DDA's and everyone of us, is that most of those land, we don't own those land.
Yeah.
So when we come to try to develop those infrastructures, those are some big issues that saw. And on one side, the department wants everybody to build this standardised thing, but can we afford to do that? That's the question I'm asking. Affordability becomes a big issue for us. Or should we find a middle ground and go with the refurbishment and get the service rolling? So that's just a comment, not a reply or anything, but just a comment or some of the... So we need to work hard to get this. We've been working around to try and get our DDS. Part of the reason why we signed the SLA is basically through the, when we say PHA, I don't see myself, I'm the health sector of the provincial government. That needs to be cleared in the minds of everybody. When education is still packed up under our health, we are there, there as in terms of health. So whatever little money they give to us is the provincial government's giving to the districts. So the idea that we are trying to socialise more within the district is the kina for kina arrangement. So when we go down, they come up and then we support these facilities at our district levels. I'll stop here. But thank you, Chair. Tomorrow we'll have another opportunity to also discuss further on other issues. Thank you.
That's a very important issue because you have, you have eight posts all over the country. Maybe during the colonial days, our forefathers were very proactive, you know, they gave land and because they realised the importance of eight posts. And that one seemed to have gone out the door. Everybody's after compensation.
All right, thank you. I stop. Thank you, CEO, and thank you, members of the committee. Thank you, public and your medical professionals, to give your time to appear before the committee. We really appreciate. There's a lot of issues in health that we need to cover. There's so much to talk about in health. There's so much that has gone wrong, so much. But we are here specifically for this issue that was raised on the floor of Parliament by the leaders of Morroby Province. So we would like to establish the facts so we can report back to Parliament that, sorry, we hear wrong, it's like this and like that. So we are here to establish those facts and report back to Parliament to clear the air. We all know issues with PNG power. It's nothing new to us. So some of us are born and grown with this issue of PNG power. That is a story we will never forget. So we're not going to go and delve more into that. We just want to concentrate on the issue that Angar was without power for twenty hours and seven people died because of that. So we are here to establish the facts and report the facts to Parliament so everyone can understand what happened. So ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. It's twenty-five past four and we would like to close now. Thank you. Tomorrow we will be down there. Sorry, just one announcement. Tomorrow's inquiry hearing will be down at the conference room at One Golf, One Golf Hotel. So it's easy for you to walk across to your golf hotel. Thank you very much. Oh, there are some little refreshments at the back. Help yourselves. Here, you collect all this and... For tomorrow.